This is the 20th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. I ask that you please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. I ask that you please stand for the prayer and also the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Eldon. And tonight for the prayer, we will all, we ask you to join in and say the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And deliver us not from temptation, but deliver us from evil. And as kingdom, and as glory.
Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to agenda order approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order? Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Eldon. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Shancy.
Thursday, August 22nd, starting at 11:00 a.m., at the former City of Law Properties and the Farmers Market will be set through the 14th, starting at 8:00 a.m. at the former City of Law Properties.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda. We do not have any tonight, so we'll move on to our business agenda. Business agenda item number one is authorization for the city to engage and enter into a contract with Community Bank as the city's lead primary bank depository for FY 2024-2023-2028 and with the People's Bank as the city's secondary bank depository for FY 2024 through 2028. Scott, presentation.
The last time that we've been out to depositories was in 2020. Previously, they were doing every two years, and they extended that to have a little bit of a rate. We have to approve the depositories before the end of this fiscal year because you cannot appoint one during your last year in office, or your year in return. As I stated in my memo, I'm suggesting that we retain Community. They met all of the qualifications in the proposal, and they answered all of our questions and provided all the documentation. They were slightly lower on the interest, but not in a offset that, you know.
Other fees.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to authorize the city to engage and enter into the contract with Community Bank as the city's lead primary bank depository for FY 2024 through 2028 and with People's Bank as the city's secondary bank depository for FY 2024 through 2028?
Salute.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Eldon?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to thank Teresa and the staff and the community if you're here. We want to thank you for your partnership. They were our first financial sponsor at the sound, and we appreciate them supporting our community. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Consideration for a property owner initiated rezoning of property from a PL public land to C2 community commercial located at 2510 College Circle, GPC number 24-27-RZ by our city attorney, Mr. Josh Danos.
Yes, sir. This property begins at 2510 College Circle. It was when we did the comprehensive rezone, it was labeled as public lands, which is obviously not the case. It's always been privately held. So the planning commission found that it was a mistake in the original rezoning and requested it be rezoned back to C2.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Danos. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve a property on initiated rezoning of property from PL public land to C2 community commercial located at 2510 College Circle, GPC number 24-27-RZ, PID number 82435010.075?
Salute.
Motion by Councilman George. Do we have a second? By Councilman Jackson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Eldon?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
This one kind of hits home because the owner of this business that will be coming into town after this rezoning is a close friend of mine. He's actually here tonight. But if you are familiar with Pasco Gold Tire in Pasco Gold on Market Street, this is planning to be an additional branch to that. It's a very honest, very well-run, a very successful automotive business. So I look forward to having them negotiate, and I appreciate Jared for investing in this good negotiate.
Thank you, Councilman George. I just want to thank all the staff. I echo Councilman George, and thank you for your interest in our city and helping move Gochae forward, and we look forward to having you in your service this year. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second, I mean George. Councilman George, second by Jackson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three. Consider a request for a 15-foot variance to secondary front yard setback requirements for a fence in a R1 low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at 1216 Grandview Drive, GPC number 24-28-VAR by Mr. Danos.
Yes, sir. This property has a house, and the property owner owns the lot that connects to it on the back, and he wants to put a privacy fence up that goes all the way, almost to the end of his property line on the banking lot. And so he needs, he wants to get within 10 feet of the lot line. Usually it's 25 feet, so he needs a 15-foot variance for that fence.
Thank you, Mr. Danos.
And the planning commission sent this one to the council without a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comments on business agenda item number three? Any public comments? Do we have a motion by council?
Salute.
What are you going to do? Approve it? Deny it?
I make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion by Councilman Eldon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Eldon?
No, I'm familiar with his property. I can walk out my driveway and see three homes that are already have fences the way he's requesting it to be. There's already precedents been set, and I feel that we should approve it.
Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, I also drove the area and seen several fences in the area similar, some of them four foot, some of them six foot, even one of them higher than that. But I did also kind of verify that there will still be 22 foot from the street to his fence, which will allow him or whoever to pull off the load and stop at the gate and won't be interfering with traffic in the road. So there's good clearance there with the 15-foot fence.
Okay. Councilman College?
It was the same thing that Councilman Anderson was going to say. The property line is approximately 13 foot off the edge of the road, so provide additional 10 foot from there. It's close enough to a 25-foot setback, and I don't think it's going to impede. It's a straight stretch of road, so no sight of light, out of sight impact from it. So that's it.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
Do we have any opposition? Mr. Danos, the planning commission made?
No.
We have a motion by Councilman Eldon, second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Consideration of a special exception that would allow an accessory structure to be located on the lot without a primary structure in the M U R C, Merck NW, mixed-use recreation commercial Mary Walker zoning district at 3204 Willis Street, GPC number 24-29-SC.
Yes, sir. This property, the owner for his predecessor in 2014 was given approval to place an RV on this property, and now he's coming back and wants a slab and an RV cover to park the RV under and a boat house and a bulkhead. Negotiating commission recommended that the bulkhead be allowed to be replaced and allowed for a stick-built boat house, but they recommended denial of the slab and RV cover.
Thank you, Mr. Danos. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? We did. If you do, if you want to comment, come to the podiums, take your first and last name, and you've got three minutes.
I need to give you some. I live in stringer, specifically, I'm about two and a half hours from here. What I was wanting is to rebuild the existing seawall to follow everybody down, and with that, build a cover boat shed to live. And slab and RV cover was just to take my RV because it's down here about eight, 10 months out of the year. And it's just a little, gives me a little security that's just not letting me through the roof of it. Of course, they denied that, which I was disappointed. I wanted that to be my first project. But.
Okay. That's all you have?
That's it.
Okay. Did you want to say anything? Did she want to say something too? You got to come to the podium, state your first and last name.
I'm Terri Simmons, and I'm in Swat.
And your address, real fast.
My home address is 304 Kenwood, 7th and Stringer.
Okay.
But they denied us because they said we didn't have a permanent structure there. But if we build a boat house, would that be considered?
Still a primary structure.
Primary or permanent?
Primary, yes.
Okay.
Or like a home that is like a secondary home, like a stick bit, like a home, like brick and mortar type thing is what they meant when they meant primary.
Okay. I remember when we first got our permit for the camper, we were told that we could build a slab, put a slab there to put the camper on. And they didn't say we could put a structure there to cover it, but.
It was suggested.
Were you the first, were you the first person to get one? It was an elderly couple that we approved.
It was Jim Lacy, and he and Peter did.
He didn't get all that approved, didn't he?
He just had it all viewed there.
That's all that was approved. He didn't get nothing else, and he only was, has approval for one, and there's been two and three there.
But we were told that you could have an additional camper there, like for 168 hours.
That is incorrect. Whoever told you that? They, did our planning department tell you that? Because that is not.
No, it was in the, it was in the ordinance. It's the, it says the property owner can have an additional camper on there for 168 hours. I've got a copy of this.
Mr. Danos?
Can I have your copy?
Here, if you want to.
Scott, are you on the line?
I don't think anybody called in yet.
I am there.
Did, is that, she's saying somebody stated that she could have an additional RV there for 160 hours or something? But I don't think, I don't think she's talking about the Merck, and this is, this is if you had a brick and mortar home there. This isn't like a special exception like they have. They came and got a special or a conditional use major. Which one did we do, Mr. Danos? Did we do a major? It should be on your deed, whoever closed the loan when you bought it. There should have been, that should have been with your deed because we voted, and it follows the property, not the one person. So what we approved for him should be attached to your deed, whoever did the loan closing. But this is if you already have brick and mortar, if you have a house, and what you can now have at your home is what this is. It's not related to something that is, was approved on a special condition.
Okay, well, we misunderstood because we, we have been emailing and trying to do what we were supposed to do.
Right. So that's what, that answers that question. I got it, Scott.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna, we'll see whatever that'll affect on whatever, and we'll let you.
In just a minute, any other comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation or deny the planning commission's recommendation or approve the planning commission's recommendation? What changes?
I make a motion. We approve the planning commission's recommendations and allow for the rebuilding of the bulkhead and stick-built boat house.
We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Eldon?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion, but I could still use it like a temporary protection cloth cover on their camper while they're gone for, say, a few months or something, right?
I'm assuming I could, yeah.
Yeah, it could be attached to.
Okay.
Councilman College?
Reason for this is recently, we've been having a lot of applications for RVs and things of that nature in the Mary Walker Merck area. And after a lot of these options come from us, we're going to actually, on a city-initiated, council-initiated, look at this area here. So just stay in tune in the future. You might have the ability to put the cover there and so forth, but right now, we're working through some items on this zoning. That's all I have.
And I echo Councilman College, but you will, if we do any rezoning, you would get notified because it'd be pertaining to that area where you are. Councilman Gilat?
As I said in the last meeting, I thought that we need to do something. That particular area is in my board, and we created a Merck board zone there back, way back in 2009, and now we've been having problems with it ever since. So I asked in the last meeting if we could do something to try to figure out how to make it more compatible or whatever you want to call it, even for all of the citizens that sit down here, because it started out years ago before the city as a fish camp. So now we need to figure out how we're going to solve the particular problems that we have down there in the Merck area. And again, we're going to have to look at that, and we need to do that in the near future.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, I kind of echo off what Councilman just said. This area, we're getting a lot of people coming in with different things, dealing with RVs, and it's on a consistent basis right now. So every, just about every meeting we did have, we'd have the same area, people wanting to do something dealing with a RV. So we do need to clear, get some clear, get it clear in the UDO so that the people can stop spending money, come and trying to get something done and then get denied. As of right now, where the law sits, some of the things that they are coming here with, they could actually do without having to come across council. So we do need to clear that so that the public can have something that, that is factual because right now, we're in a city, we're putting, we're putting the council board and the planning in a pickle to have to go over things that are deemed in the law. So that's just something for us to set out a think on, you know, for the near future because we need to start doing, handling this like right now. We don't need to wait until down the line. We need to handle this now so that the people, the public, will have something they can truly go by, and I have it for the time.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
I have no discussion.
Can I say one other thing?
What?
I have, I have three to four lots there. Three, two to three are in one part, and one is set. Is there any way that I could submit for appropriate to have an RV on that other lot or split us up?
Right now, they've all been being denied. You're more than welcome to do that, but I, I mean, it might be approved, it might not. I would wait till the rezoning is, the zoning, let us handle the zoning thing that we just all talked about. I wouldn't waste my money at this time.
Is that a separate lot you have in here, or is it?
It's a separate, it's a lot of all laid on.
Okay, it's not in the RV camp location?
It is, it's going in my, my lot, just a lot.
It's right beside where it is now.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, that would be my recommendation, only looking out for you. Hopefully, it won't be much longer, and we'll have that addressed for it. I also want to echo what everybody has said. It's just growing in that area, and we're doing the best. We've got citizens who have brick and mortar that we need to, you know, accommodate their requests too and try to help them and keep the heritage of the neighborhood at the same time. So that's what we're looking at and right now, what we're dealing with. So I want to give y'all kudos when y'all purchase the property, though. I personally want to thank y'all for maintaining it, keeping it clean, and us not having to always have code enforcement down there to ask y'all to beautify it, mow it, because y'all have done a great job with beautification down there on your corner. So I want to thank y'all for your investment from Jasper County down to Jackson County.
This is my vacation plan.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second from Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five. Consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow a church in the C2 community commercial zoning district located at 7417 Martin Bluff Road, GPC number 24-30-CU by Mr. Danos.
Yes, sir. This is the, I've been told, this is the old Martin Bluff that, just another worship group now, and they want to have church services and that ability to do that, and they need a major, planning commission recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Danos. That brings us to any public comments on business agenda item number five. Do we have any public comments? Do we have a motion by council to accept and approve the planning commission's recommendation for the conditional use major permit that would allow a church in the C2 community commercial zoning district located at 7417 Martin Bluff Road, GPC number 24-30-CU, PID number 85432014.000?
Salute.
Motion by Councilman George?
Second.
Second by Councilman Eldon. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Eldon?
No, sir.
Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, what's the reason for this? It haven't always been a church.
I believe it was grandpa did it in it first, and now it's been vacant, and so it requires a conditional use to continue those types of operations.
Okay, thank you.
Danos, Councilman? Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
I recognize the beautiful applicant back there in the back from Suzanne Martin's Facebook page, but I just want to thank you for having hope in that building and the location, and the city of Gochae to purchase it and revamp it for more religious activity and worship and light in our community. It's definitely needed, and we sincerely appreciate it.
Dr. Kate Hart, I echo Councilman George. We're glad to have you and your husband here this evening with us, and your investment to Gochae, and the church, as you know, closed, and that church has been a big part of that ours, that community up there, but also the whole city and Jackson County for decades. You know, a lot of youth had a lot of fun memories there, a lot of community activities up there from Halloween to Christmas to Easter, a lot of events, you know, autumn fairs. Just a great time and memories, so I look forward to you all coming to Gochae and being a part of our community and having activity up there for all age groups. So thank you, and God bless y'all. We have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman Eldon. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our docket of claims. As you all know, this tough presentation, our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery, has provided online, attached to the agenda, provided on the council, and that is our presentation of the docket of claims. Any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
I make a motion. We approve the docket of claims by that all entries are on or true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. We got a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number seven, selection of solid waste provider by our city manager, Ms. Shancy.
Yes, Mayor, we, as you well know, we have not bid our garbage contracts since 2018. It was a six-year contract, and at the time, you went out for RFPs in 2018, the statute only allowed courses of this contract. That contract was also without CPI, meaning it did not raise in inflation. The price did not. So you were forced this time to go out for an RFP, anticipating that since 2018, we've experienced quite a large inflation. We anticipated that the price would go up. We also checked with other cities to see what they were paying. So last, the original bids came in, or proposals came in, the original proposal for Waste Pro without the revised recycling has often climbed up pieces of cost of the citizens' income. Waste Pro without recycle originally was 29.22 per household. With recycle is originally 34.75. Additional cart was 10.34, and storm debris was 20.78. Your other proposer, Pelican, without recycle was 29.75, with recycle 36.77, additional cart $5, storm debris $12. Last meeting, you authorized part of the statute, made to negotiate, and you selected both companies with which to negotiate. I had sent you several options. The first option is without, I gave you, without recycle and with recycle after negotiation. The second option was with a CPI increase with no cap. Your comptroller and city clerk and I do not recommend that you go with a CPI increase each year with no cap because I ran some quick math, and in two years, you're going to be over what the original bid was. So I think it's important to add some consistency here. The options that I'm fixing to read to you that were negotiated would be a six-year contract with no CPI increase, and after six years, track the statute, which would allow a CPI increase and four one-year extensions, which basically means you would have the option, if you so chose at the end of six years, to give a CPI increase and go on with the four one-year extensions, or you could read whichever one you thought was best. So this is option one. I'm going to give it to you, without recycle and with recycle. Without recycle, Waste Pro, $27.25 per household, with no new carts. Waste Pro, no new carts, with recycle, $72.78. They lowered their price on the additional carts, $5 from 10.34. Storm debris was originally 20.78, they lowered it to 12.78. Pelican, which they don't, in all fairness, they don't have the option to do without new carts because that would be a new provider. New carts without recycle, $27.15. New carts with recycle, $33.87. Additional carts, $5, storm debris, $12. I wanted to add too that both of these providers agreed to do what's called a subscription service. I do not recommend that you award recycling because only about one fifth of the total residents even occasionally use it, but every single resident is getting billed every month when you award with recycle, like they are using it. Recycling rules have become so strict that most of what's put out doesn't even qualify with recycling, it ends up. Recycling rules have become so strict that most of what's put out doesn't even qualify with recycling and ends up in a dump anyway. So they, both providers, however, agreed to do what's called a subscription recycling service, meaning that if you award garbage without recycle, that they will allow the citizen wants recycling, they can go directly to the company and get recycling from the company and pay for it themselves to the company. So that's basically what subscription is. I would also like to bring to your attention that the garbage fee that is charged to the citizen is not just for picking up the garbage. It's got administrative billing fees in it, but more importantly, it has your storm debris in there. Basically meaning if you had a tropical storm, if you had a category one hurricane, and this is the fund that you have to pick up that debris fund. So typically and historically, we've added $4, round it and then add $4 to cover all of that and to make sure you have that fund to do that work. So under, even though Pelican with new carts is 10 cents cheaper than Waste Pro at 2725, the actual garbage cost to the citizen would be $31 for either one, whichever way you went. And you have any questions? I have asked both Pelican and Waste Pro to be here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number seven?
I do.
If you do, come to the podiums, take your first and last name, and you have three minutes.
My name is Rodney Gode, 1713 Alvin Boulevard, and this is the first I know about the recycling and the garbage rates probably going to go up. But I have a backyard full of glass because when they first started this recycling thing, they would take glass. And then I'd go out there one day and the glass bottles are thrown out in my yard. They don't take glass anymore because it's too costly. But if they're going to recycle, why don't they take glass? I mean, I don't want to see it go into a landfill because it's dangerous. You can't go on the beach with glass bottles. But anyway, uh, they need to give specific instructions on how they want things recycled. Because you take the labels off, the plastic things, you put them in the thing and they, like Ms. Shancy said, they don't want them then because they're not recycled properly. Well, where are you going to get the instructions on how to recycle? The little emblem on the thing says recyclable. So you put it in there empty, washed out, and then they don't want it. But that's all I have to say, and I hope my bill don't go up.
We all pay water bills up here too. Um, Mr. Gode, I'm sorry, Mr. Olson.
All right. Mark Olson, 2504 Robert Iron Drive. Would the prescribed recycling be at the quoted cost or would it be at a different cost?
No, sir. I, I don't know. I don't think council will have to ask Waste Pro, but I did get calls from Pelican. It's with a 95 gallon cart. Every other week, 500 to 1,000 residents who sign up for it would be 1995 per citizen. If 1,001, 2,000 sign up, 1695, 2,001 plus would be 50. 95 gallon carts once per month picked up would be $5.51. And once per week with an 18 gallon bin would be $8.92. But I'm not, I didn't get those same, they, they just said they would, Waste Pro just said they would do it.
Did that answer your questions, Mr. Olson?
It did.
Thank you. Mr. Gode, any other citizen comments?
Somebody else? Mark, this is Eric, 4102 Kingsley Drive in Hickory Hills. This is an old problem that some of y'all will remember a few years back. I trimmed a fence line. Trash was not picked up. It went on for a while. I put out some more here the other day because the trees I hadn't trimmed because of knee surgery, shoulder surgery, other medical issues. I finally got to where I could trim some of it so I could mow them. Put it out there Friday. It was not picked up. Monday morning, I called. It started back again. Well, they can only pick up six cubic yards. Oh, the truck got pulled. Well, go dump it and come back. I don't understand, and this is something y'all discussed in the, as far as the garbage part, I have no problem with the garbage. Those, they pick up religiously and everything. But I saw Goche Facebook, all, all that kind of stuff about the cost of these bins and everything. Well, the neighbor across the street, he's got six kids, two adults over there. He puts out three garbage cans every week. Is this going to affect his rates?
He should already, Mr. Gode, be paying extra for cans.
Yeah. Oh, is that right?
Yes, you only get one can.
Oh, okay.
If you have more than one, you pay extra.
Is that annually?
No, monthly, and it's billed through the service provider.
Ah, okay. Well, that's something I was not aware of.
And if he's not, then he's getting lucky. He better say he hit the jackpot.
Well, anyway, but we're back to square one as far as these limb pickup and everything. What's it going to take to get them picked up?
This is the same situation that we went through for is a phone call because this is a special circumstance on one of these things right here. Normally, it's six cubic yards, but a lot of times, our service provider will work with us and it's bigger than that and they'll make a special trip out there to pick up the remainder of it. It just depends on how big the pile is. But basically, a phone call to one of us is probably the best way to go around it.
And I could, and I can put some out there every week if that's what it has to be done, you know? But I'll be doing it now when I'm able to on a regular basis because this is a pretty good sized area. Because we got nine lots across Kingsley plus acreage in the back, and I've got to trim it. And I can put a big pile out there and burn it, but I don't want first responders to have to be out there either. Because I can tell you, no turnout. Suits are hot.
Yeah, don't, please don't burn it, Mr. Gode. Please. Trust me, we will work with whoever.
Four, no turnout, coach.
Thank you.
Yes, um, 14 Benny Coe, 14 Troya Route East, come on. Is there any way we can bid on the, on the, on the contracts and let, instead of they bidding on the contracts, is there any way we can get a proposal in?
Well, we issued the RFP. The RFP, it was published and we voted on it in a public meeting. It was on our public web.
I'm saying, is like, he like Waste Pro and Pelican, can we put in what we want to pay?
No, we don't tell them what we want to pay. They, they, we put in what we want in the RFP and they tell us what the cost is going to be.
I understand what you're saying and that didn't happen. So what's, what happens is they tell us what the rate is today and then we approve Ms. Paula to go back to negotiate.
Everything on it, but I'll pay you.
Yeah, so when we got to that point, Ms. Paula did negotiate and that's whenever she tells them we're willing to pay this or negotiate with this price. So it does happen, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we go out.
Inflation.
Mr. Coleman, just so you know, we do, we vote on a RFP, like a request for proposals, sort of like a, this is what we want. Provide your rates to us. The city manager and the staff, they review them. They come back to us. In this case, we authorize the city manager to go negotiate with both companies to get the best she could, the lowest price for the citizens. They're both competitive and it's neck and neck. So Ms. Shancy came back after negotiations and provided us what the negotiations were. We have to vote after those negotiations.
Taking the lead, you just.
Well, we could deny both, but then in which case, you're going to be taking your own garbage up to the landfill.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, you know.
Mr., I'm sorry.
It doesn't.
Mr., go ahead. I went talking to, I was talking to the citizen that was speaking when you were trying to speak.
Yeah, okay. I understand.
We tried to give the best possible rate possible for the presidency.
Mr. Moss?
My name is Charles, wanted a 1920 West Cape Power, Goche, Mississippi. I want to know how much of an increase this will cost the citizen? How much now?
About $9?
$10.
$10.
Oh, okay, then, okay.
Any other citizen comments? Mr., no, just this item, Mr. Gode, I'll say. And Mr. Gode, to answer your question about glass, that, there was a notification put out by the service provider about glass when they did stop taking glass. They notified. Um, we put it on social media and all that when it happened. If you didn't see it, I apologize. The things that were collected, that were allowed in recycling, the service provider was generous and they put a nice fancy flyer in the water bill. It was in one of your water bills. You would have received it and it would have told you all the do's and don'ts and how to recycle. Also, our, um, public information department, um, they posted it on our social media page a couple of times also when we had an influx of calls from citizens. So we have put the information out there. I just apologize if you didn't see it.
I did get it.
Okay, I apologize to you.
2002.
Okay.
They even put some stickers on our waste bins that said no glass containers.
So I apologize if you didn't get it. Okay. No more public comments on that agenda item. That brings us to council. Just a reminder, um.
Can we open this up for discussion?
I think we have to have a motion and then discussion.
Can I make a motion to open this up for discussion?
Judge, can we do that?
Yes, sir.
All right, I make a motion that we open, uh, council for questions and comments.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman College to open for discussion, a second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Motion carries. Go ahead, Councilman College.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll start with it. All right, uh, just for clarification, and that's what a gentleman had asked about the three bins and so forth like that. I understand that a majority of the residents in this city have one garbage cart. And sometimes they'll have a secondary cart that might be purchased from a Lowe's or a Home Depot and so forth like that. Do both contract providers going to pick up that secondary garbage can if it's not their dedicated cart at any additional cost?
I'm going to let Mr. Gueye answer that for Waste Pro and, is he here? Mr. Rod, answer that, can you, Mr. Rod, answer that?
But to answer your question, yes, we do currently and we continue to do that.
Okay.
The citizens for carts as well.
Yeah, so it, I mean, it's real ours. Just remember that our proposals would leave trucks hanging in cars, so.
Right. And then, uh, second question, I says, I understand that probably both service providers is going to utilize a landfill that's up in, uh, up in the Van Cleve area. Is that correct? Uh, and, no?
We will.
You will?
Well, here's how we're going to do it. Let me regulate. Councilman College is going to ask a question. If you're asking them to the service provider, both of y'all, and we'll let Waste Pro, since they're the current service provider, answer first and then we'll let Pelican, Mr. Rock, answer secondly. Who's going to be the spokesperson for Waste Pro?
Either one of us, can we?
Which one wants to be it? We're going to have one. Jolene, Mr. Rock, you're going to be for Pelican, right? Okay, let's go.
So, okay, so what landfill will both y'all be utilizing? Waste Pro first.
You're talking about for garbage?
Yes.
For C and D?
For garbage.
For garbage, we go to, uh, in Pas Christian.
Pas Christian?
For waste management.
Well, in Harrison County. Okay.
But there's not one in Jackson County.
Okay, and then for?
For the C and D, it would be our landfill in Fenchlin. It's one of our three.
Okay.
Uh, same thing. We would be using the, uh, the corn road in, uh, Pas Christian. It's not a landfill. On the coast, as far as with garbage debris, uh, we'd use their site or Waste Man's site.
Waste Man's, okay. Currently, right now, I think with our contract with Waste Pro, residents are allowed to use the C and D site for their debris, no, no, no charge cost.
No, sir, that's not part of your garbage. That's part of their planning thing, approving their landfill.
Okay, so it's completely separate? I got you, I got you. Okay, I got you. That's the only questions I have.
Jolene looks confused, but Jolene, that's related to the dump agreements when we approved the dump. Agreements for the sales to be approved at the dumps? When we voted on that, that's what Ms. Shancy is saying that's a part of. That wasn't a part of the garbage contract.
Okay.
Okay. That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, we'll start with Councilman Alvin and then we'll go down though. Councilman Alvin got it? Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, I, I know where Waste Pro is located as far as home base is right here north on this street, right here north of City Hall, right? Is, that's your main office?
Yes, yes. As a facility, yes, that we would service.
Is that, that's just for Goche or is that for all your areas or?
We, we service Goche, Ocean Springs, Moss Point and Pascagoula out of that facility.
Okay, and this, this is your main office?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, I don't know where Pelican's from.
We in Biloxi.
I'm sorry?
We in Biloxi, off of exit 41.
Biloxi off of highway?
Exit 41.
Exit 41. Okay. All right, that's, that's all I got.
Councilman College anymore?
No.
Councilman Gallott?
Explain, I'm going to ask the city man, when you talked about a CPI.
A consumer price index. And it was specifically under the category of garbage. So it has ranged historically, just lately, recently, I've looked at it, maybe 3.7%, it may be 6%, it may be 7%. But it, it has been pretty steadily higher traditionally.
I understand.
So with no cap, the CPI is 8%. You know, you're talking about almost three bucks going up. So that's, it was your price for a household that fluctuates away according to the CPI, which would go up each year.
Is it going to be that for both contracts?
No, I said we do not recommend that. The price I gave you was no CPI for six years.
So these prices we got here, it stays static for?
Six years.
Six years. Okay. I was, I was thinking one of them says, okay, we're going to renegotiate the CPI.
No, I said at the end of six years, that would be in part of the CPI with four one-year extensions if you chose to do that.
At the end of the six years.
Yes, sir.
Now, we just negotiated a extension with Waste Pro.
That's right, till October the 7th. Just three weeks.
Till October the 7th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That, because your fiscal year begins October the 1st, and that is on a Monday, no, it was in the middle of the week, I think. So we started on the 7th. That's the first full week. And you can't raise your garbage rates until the new fiscal year.
So whatever rate we pick would start in October.
October the 7th.
October the 7th. Now, we've got a budget meeting scheduled for next Thursday at lunch.
Mr.?
I'm thinking, why can't we include this in the budget rather than approve it tonight? Why are we asking for it to be approved tonight?
Because you have to know which provider you're going to select, so we will know what's the budget. So there are a lot more options than just this option one. So in order for me to present an accurate paper to you and start the publication of the increase in garbage rates, I got to know what we're going to do in order to give you an accurate budget on Thursday for the enterprise fund. So that's why I wanted you to do it tonight, so I can make sure my, our numbers are right for Thursday.
Okay, we have another budget meeting after that one.
There's not enough time in the timeframe. We're in a short timeframe this year to get it, uh, published.
Before I get them wrong, you have to publish before we raise the garbage rate. So that's why I wanted to go ahead.
This is October.
We have to have it adopted by September, the?
The budget's got to go in the paper this week. The budget's got to go in the paper this weekend.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
The budget has to be advertised this weekend?
The hearing notice.
Paper this weekend, your hearing has to be September.
When do we, when do we, when are we going to? I think you said we're going to approve the budget at the next regular scheduled meeting? Are we going to do it next week?
No, sir, this is a budget form session where I explain to you where we are, everything. Notice a public hearing on the budget will be put in the paper this weekend. The budget hearing will be September second, I think, or third, which is the first huge day. Then you will adopt the budget September tenth because the following huge day, because it has to be adopted before the good thing.
Which these dates are, it's not just us, it's every city in the state of Mississippi. We all have the same dates. It's not made up. It's in the state's statute.
I just thought this could be included in the budget session too, but you're saying no. That's all I have.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, so, this the complication I have right here, is that the decision that we decide would be without recycling or with recycling. So, when we make our vote, I want to make sure that I know whether we doing it without, with, because I, you know, I want to, I want to get the best bang for our bucks, bottom line. And so, either one, the decision is going to determine what I feel that we should do or my decision.
Councilman Anderson, Councilman.
There's one other thing. The, the other landfill that, I mean, I know there's no landfill, call it, what do they call it? The, the one that's here in Jackson County, the, I guess debris.
Which one? Waste is down here, it's closed. They've been going, they've been going into Seaman Road in Van Cleve.
And who owns that one?
Waste Pro owns one or two.
Okay.
Three.
Okay, that's what I'm trying.
Is that all you have, Councilman Jackson?
Can I speak to what you said about recycle or not?
Yes, ma'am.
When I told you thirty-one dollars per citizen, that was the lowest price there was, and I felt like the best bang for buck, and that is without recycling. The citizen would still have the option, like if, no one, all sixty-five hundred households will not pay for recycling.
Right.
But let's say you were negotiating, you just feel strongly about recycling.
Right.
You can contact the provider you choose directly and pay them, and they will bring you a cart, and you pay them a certain amount a month, and they will pick your recycling up. But if none of the other council wanted recycling, they're still paying this thirty-one dollars, they're not paying that extra nineteen, sixteen, whatever it is, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
So, without recycle is your by far cheapest option for this, all the citizens.
Yeah. It's still, it's just, it's not, got all the information, it's still a tough one, but I'm, I don't know, we got to make a decision, we got to make a decision, because it's tight. I have no full comment.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
I would just like to thank both of you for submitting proposals back to us. I know Pelican, this is your second go, I think, I don't know if you did it the third time, second go with us, and Ms. Paula and the team have spoke highly of how they've worked with you and how you've worked with them. So, I appreciate you for keeping your interest in Goche. Waste Pro, it's been a great six years. John's always helping me out with stuff and I have no complaints. I've enjoyed having Waste Pro, I think the staff have enjoyed having Waste Pro. You know, the last six years, before six years ago, we had some issues, but they seem to have been rectified and, you know, every company has bumps in the road and every company can fix those. But I just want to give a thank you to both of you for continuing your investment and want to invest in the city of Goche. And I would like to say that I really loved the subscription idea, I think that was genius, and I wish we would have done that years ago. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman George. Any other?
Yeah, I had a question.
Councilman Elbin?
I was to me, in the storm funds, if we had no storm during that year, where does those funds that were collected, where do they get?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The extra, the extra four dollars, I think he's talking about.
All that's not storm, you've got uncollectibles, in other words, just.
Billing.
Every household you're getting charged for is not paying their garbage bill basically. You've got that, you've got the administrative billing, which we do, and you pay for, so that's an in-house thing. And then a certain portion of that four dollars is for the solid waste fund. So, we try, if I'm wrong, to keep, keep.
Yes, group?
Go ahead. You quite do that, don't you?
Basically, it's a buffer, so that if we have a storm that, and it comes in, that we have that money sitting there and we can use that to pay, and it not come out of general fund.
It's like an SBR.
Particularly, we don't have a lot of extra money in general fund to do that with. At the end of the year, I print in the newspaper every year, fiscal year, where the money goes and what we bounce wind up with. And we will keep a small amount in that fund, but the rest, we push it out to the general fund.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elbin. Any other comments?
Yeah, so, the storm debris, that's collected monthly as well?
No, sir, so, what, last time we went out for RFPs, I put that in there so that in the case you had a storm that generated less than a hundred cubic yard, a hundred thousand cubic yards of storm debris, that you could use, you could activate that and Waste Pro would go pick it up. So, and we've done it two or three times. So, in that situation, when we've activated them, it's been under a hundred thousand cubic yards, but that is collection only. At that point, you activate your monitoring disaster contract, you pay for disposal, and they are collecting, and they have a monitor seeing how many cubic yards, and you're submitting all that for reimbursement by FEMA if it's a federally declared disaster. So, it's basically a bridge, so, when you don't have a hurricane big enough to go bring in whatever your disaster debris contract is, you can get your debris cleaned up in thirty days by virtue of your local provider, and that's what this twelve seventy-eight and twelve dollars that Pelican is.
Okay, so, we don't have any issues, like throughout the whole year, we don't have to use this one?
That's right, if you have a storm or a tropical storm, you can activate it.
That's what I mean.
Without having to go out and go through all this process, and they will accept it because it went through all the.
And it don't delay pickup as some cities have after a storm, a tornado, straight line windstorm, and any other natural disaster we might incur that we hope we don't.
Think we will accept that bill?
Yes, they accepted it. What was the last one, Zeta? They said we used Waste Pro during Zeta, and we had Thompson.
Thompson.
Montgomery, yes, yeah, we got reimbursement for it.
They did a good job. Is that all you had, Councilman?
That's it.
I echo what all of the council has said. I think, and especially Councilman George, you know, Waste Pro, you know, I was here the last time we were voting on this contract, and it seems everything is going up. I've listened to our citizens and trust that it's hard to have to vote for an increase because we all have the same increase and we are in the same boat as you. We do not get special treatment either. So, when we vote on this, it's what's in best for the city interest and all. It's not that we want to do it, it's what you have to do, unfortunately. To our residents, you know, the recycling topic, I'm a green person, I recycle at my home, and it's hard, but I also see us, we should not put a burden on all residents if all residents are not benefiting when it's that much of a cost difference. And it's not fair for the, us green people who recycle to make the ones who don't have an increase in their utility bill if they don't want one. I think the subscription valet service, whatever you want to call it these days, with recycling on each individual end with whichever service provider is the best option, and I know either whichever the board goes with, I have no doubt will accommodate the residents. It would be sort of like anybody now in the city of Goche who has an extra can, that is what you would call subscription service slash valet service, and that is billed through the service provider directly. I want to thank Waste Pro. They've had a lot of hiccups with tragic accidents here recently and their employees with some accidents, and they go above and beyond to take care of their employees, I feel. And also, when we call them, I feel like they respond. I feel like we have a great working relationship. Pelican, I thank you all as I did the last time when I voted on you. I called references for both, I called your references continue to speak highly of your service. Your Facebook and social media page continues to rock today like it did years ago, and kudos to whoever runs your social media. I have to say, you get your information out there to your citizens. So, kudos to both of y'all. Thank both companies for your investment and interest here in the city of Goche. I want to thank Ms. Chansey for her due diligence and her hard work, and everybody to come back because the prices when she got the RFP were high, but we appreciate everybody working to try to offer the best rate we can and the best service to our citizens in this current time. I can share with our citizens that our rates are comparative, some lower. We're lower than a sister city even with this proposal, and we would also be a little higher than maybe one of our sister cities, but we're still all three, all four sister cities in the same roughly billing, so it's not substantially different, I can assure you because I've called each one to compare prices. With that being said, we have no more discussion. Do we have a motion from council? If you make a motion, you need to make sure you include everything in your motion, the option one, with or without recycling, and to direct the city attorney to draft a contract per the terms of the RFP, and direct the city manager to execute and choose, if you choose not to award recycling, then you need to consider whether you want to provide and offer the subscription recycling to the citizens.
I'll make a motion to award the solid waste contract to Waste Pro, including option one with no CPI, no recycling, and direct the city attorney to draft a contract per the items, terms of the RFP, and to direct the city manager to execute same.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
We need to add to offer subscription services for recycling.
I thought he said that.
No.
I said no recycle.
But what about subscription?
Offer your citizens the opportunity to get it and pay for it if they want it, the subscription.
Okay, let's back it up, we'll do it all over again, okay? I'll make a motion to award a solid waste contract to Waste Pro, including option one, no recycling, no CPI, and offer the option for citizens?
Yes.
To contract with Waste Pro for their own recycling services. And I direct the city attorney to draft a contract for the terms of the RFP and direct the city manager to execute same.
Got a motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Albin, any discussion? Start with Councilman Albin, Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Wait a minute, I would like to make a discussion. I do want to thank Pelican for coming in and presenting the proposals they did, and it's nothing against Pelican, the price come out exactly the same, and this company was already here with us for six years already, so that's the reason.
I appreciate it, but I'm not going to continue coming in here, I'm not going to get a contract, so just for nothing, we're going to have a long one, definitely, that change here. There will be no negotiation, but I'm just saying, you know, just being honest with y'all. I was here eighteen years ago, I mean, I did, I was a Lowe's veteran, new trucks, and I still get it, so I appreciate you, but, you know, obviously.
Mr. Ray, if you just wait a minute, because we do not have a, we just have a motion and a second and nobody has voted. We have a, go ahead, Councilman Anderson?
I was, I was, I just.
Okay, and that was his response to you. Councilman College?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Pelican, right there, but this is the second time you've been around, both times. This time, it was a lot closer than it was last time, and I understand you're offering new trucks, new carts, and so forth. What I will ask right now of Waste Pro, if it does go your direction, would you be willing to replace any damaged carts currently at no charge to residents?
We will continue what we're doing now, and the resident councils, if they have a damaged cart, we will replace it within the forty-hour timeframe that we're working under that. So, we continue to replace carts, we probably have, we probably do about fifty, would you say they, that we're replacing right now, and as far as the base of trucks, we've already ordered new trucks for this contract.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Galat?
I have no more comments.
Councilman Jackson?
No more.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman Albin, all in favor, all opposed. Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda, all motions are approved in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. Thank you, Chief. One.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to pull seven.
Thank you. He's pulling seven. One approved, anybody else want to pull one before I read them all out? One approval of minutes from this motion would be consent agenda, approve consent?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. One through six and eight. One approval of minutes from regular council meeting held August the sixth, twenty twenty-four. Two, received June twenty twenty-four privilege license reports. Three, approval of addendum to computer support agreement with Delta Computer Systems. Four, authorization for the Goche Police Department to change internet services to ceasefire. Five, authorization to accept monetary donations for the city of Goche's Cruising Through the Decades event. Six, approval of task order one relating to the professional service agreement with Seymour Engineering. Somebody have something said? Seymour Engineering for the Fairway Boat Lounge and Pier Project Hickory Hills. Eight, authorization to enter into memorandum of understanding, MOU, to obligate funds from the American Rescue Plan, ARPA. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda, one through six and eight? Motion by Councilman Galat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, all in favor. Motion carries. That brings us, one second. I noticed the conference came in, we are past y'all's agenda item, and it did pass if y'all.
They were here.
Oh, I didn't see y'all, I'm sorry. I guess they were sitting in front of you and I did not see y'all. I apologize.
I've been here before you, actually.
Um, I apologize.
They're enjoying this.
I just wanted y'all to make sure, I thought you just, I didn't see. Okay, that brings us to consent agenda item number seven, by our city manager authorization to enter into agreement with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, for the construction of a nano filtration water treatment plant in the northeast area of Goche.
This is basically the agreement for the two point five million you got from EPA after you got. after you got the one here, and it's just the agreement for the construction of the water plant.
I just had one question, and that was, do you have any idea of, working with the Environmental Protection Agency, do we have any idea how long it might take to get that permit?
Well, that's actually a reimbursement process. It is not anything like the two nineteen. What are you talking about?
We're not involved with, we're not involved with the authority for all this one right here.
Right, right. I'm just not going for a permit, this is.
Now, so this is, this is the additional plan.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And this is a, him has been working, he's got EPA skills on the ladder.
Is there, is there any?
Hold on, here's what I think Councilman Anderson wants to know. He wants to know, when's it going to start? What's the process? When can we see activity? Is what he, is that what you're wanting?
And obviously, it's going to be the one.
That's what he wants to know.
It's going to be.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Well, this is the first step, to get all the documentation signed, and we didn't, we engaged Wagner to put this application together, so I believe that they have already started preliminary design and all that. As y'all know with the other one, this is not a month process. This is.
The difference here is, this one has not been designed. When you got the money for the one in South, the design was complete.
When we applied.
When you applied, or when, when you awarded the money under two nineteen, the design was complete. This is not designed. It's just in your twelve year capital improvements plan.
Okay.
And we went out and got a community, it unwears through the Congress, you got the community funded project grant for your second well, so it's got to go through the design process and all of that.
So, it's going to be quite a while still.
Well, no, Wagner's got experience designing this one here. This is a smaller scale, so hopefully they can get the design turned around real quick on it.
Okay, that's all I had.
Question. Is the cord going to be involved in this one?
No, sir.
Different partner.
Good.
Thank you. Is that all you had, Councilman Anderson? Thank you.
Based on that, I'll make a motion that we enter into an agreement with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, for the construction of a nano filtration water treatment plant in the northeast Gochet.
We got a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our citizen comments. We come to the podiums, take your first and last name, and you have three minutes. Councilman College will hand up the, hold up the fancy number one when you have one minutes remaining. When your one minute's up, I will ask you to please have a seat, and we'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting if you want to stay. Marcus Garrett.
Well, I have already had my three minutes, and I appreciate it.
You don't have nothing else to say?
That I do have two utility bills, though it's not just one, six cubic yards, I have two utility bills that I've come up there.
So you want two, twelve cubic yards?
Twelve cubic yards.
I get you. Well, I hope Mr. G-Boy is retiring, so we got Mr. Olson here, and he will take note.
He will take care of it.
Okay.
And I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I tell you, they do good, open garbage, good good.
Francis Smith.
My name is Francis. We're about to go back across the drive, Gochet, and my problem, we don't have street lights on that street, and my main concern is the drains, and it's been over years and years, so now, it's like three years ago, they put another drainage, so I got three in my yard, and so everything bagging up, and now my husband, my past, and so I ain't got no help, because I'm at work, I always walk, study running, you know, my front yard of the house, and went underwater due to that same drainage.
What was your address?
Twenty four.
Listen, did you call Public Works in this?
Oh, I've been giving it to, I've been calling everybody. Yes, five women came out there, but still that problem.
Okay, we'll request that Ms. Shancy get back inside with you and get with the service provider and Public Works.
I couldn't hear her name or.
It's on the list. She's got it all right down properly. You, and your number on here is correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, they'll reach back out to you.
Thank you.
Rodney Govey.
Okay.
What?
Rodney Govey, seventeen thirteen Alvin Boulevard, hope I'm talking loud enough. If I'm going to ask the citizens in Gochet to.
You cannot ask citizens the questions or to the council.
Well, I would like to put forth a, a, a motion to the city to reevaluate how the water bills are adjusted. They do not adjust for water that goes through the pipe. I had a pipe burst underneath my house, seven thousand dollars, the insurance denied it. I just recently got my water restored, but they tell me at the city, they're not going to adjust the seventeen thousand gallons that went somewhere. I don't own the house, but the house didn't float away, but seventeen thousand gallons went somewhere. They'll only adjust the sewer, and then it takes three months to do that. I've been a resident since two thousand and two. I have paid my bill on time. I have never missed a payment. I have every receipt all the way back to two thousand and two in boxes in my attic. I've used about the same amount of water for twenty-two years. Why it can't be adjusted immediately, and I have to pay for the water that went through the pipe? When the city use wastewater down there at the, the Martin Park, when they do the splash pad, all that water runs down the thing. They have a thing in the back of my neighborhood called a purge valve with fire department, and the city water, I guess, controls that. It purges. It sends thousands of gallons every day down the sewer, storm drains that wash into my lake, which is going to be my next issue when I come back, because in fact, the city does own a fifteen foot easement down our lake in the old part that is public, not the new part that is private. So, there's two issues here. I would like to make a resolution that y'all adjust the water bills for the water that is wasted through the pipe, that's no fault of our own. Do a study on it, because that part, I feel, should be adjusted, and if any citizens want to come to the next meeting, I will be here September the third on the same issue. That's it.
Thank you. Dela Moore, I think.
You sat back today. You sat back today.
Yeah, I'm talking about y'all. Okay, I want to talk about Westgate Parkway. We have some trees down there, a large magnolia tree's been dead and just sitting there.
Ms. Moore, you forgot to put your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, we're, we're in Westgate Parkway, okay? We're right down Parkway, that's the first thing that seems to enter Westgate. We have large trees that are dead. We have trees that are stumped, it's not cut down, it's, cut them down all the way down. And the magnolia trees, they're just, the leaves are flying everywhere, that's one thing. Another thing coming into Gochet from exit sixty-one, the crane rows are looking really bad. You know, I saw we had a contract to take care of that, or we have a contract, the crane rows are looking bad. And the ones on Westgate Parkway, they used to be really, really looking good, but now they're not taken care of.
There's ninety dead ones between here and fifty-seven. There's ninety dead ones between here and fifty-seven.
Oh, you going to do something about that?
Already have.
What you do?
Talk to them.
Well, I don't know if it's a disease going around, but somebody know you need to cut down or set crane the disease, and the crane rows look really bad, and these look so, so good. I was so proud to come down to Parkway, bring my company, we got confidence, but now, what's wrong with them? So if y'all going to address that, and Russell, we know you did.
Ms. Moore, thank you for coming. Charles Moore.
I doubt of them one day.
My name is Charles Moore, I live in nineteen twenty Westgate Parkway, Gochet, New York City. I'm here to tell West Anderson what he said about the African-American being here in Gochet is a shame. No councilor should never talk about another race that I need to put on Facebook. That's a bad, and I wish you a step down.
It was a ledge, Mr. Moore. A ledge.
A ledge, but you had to prove yourself. Okay, we want you to prove yourself, prove yourself. That's all I got to say. I'm a Gochet citizen, we got plenty of Gochet citizens around here. You should have never did anything like that. Thank you.
Go Gators. Chomp, chomp, Mr. Moore. Chomp, chomp.
Chomp, chomp.
See you at the game.
All right.
That brings us to our council comments. It's the second meeting of the month, so we will start with Councilman Albin.
As always, I'd like to thank the employees that are out in the field each and every day, make this city run. Couldn't do without you, and we can't thank you enough. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yeah, Ms. Shancy, I, I turned in a, I forget if it was an email or a text message about the Martin Bluff Road project, and about Ms. Dela Moore's statement last meeting about the, about the weeds growing waist and shoulder high, and it hadn't been touched yet.
I sent it, you sent, I got that today, early this morning.
I'll send it just, I'll send it Saturday. Their emails like mine, they're coming late sometimes.
I got it this morning, and I sent it to the engineer, and he responded, and I just got him all up at the end, and said, I haven't had a chance to do it.
Would it be kosher for me to stop and talk to the engineer out there when I seen?
I don't think there's an engineer out there, that's Joe.
Well, they, yeah, he represents them.
RBR, you know, but I got like the literal straight answer from Craig.
You seen what I said, they should be ashamed of themselves, the engineer letting this.
I bet it, I sent it to Craig, it says, please respond, we should talk about the day, the grass, and stuff right at the corner, I mean, I don't.
Well, piles of dirt of waist shoulder high and piles of stuff that dug up that's been there for a year, and they can't hardly work for their own mess they've created, but the grass is a mess, nobody can walk down through there, it's dangerous. Thank you.
Councilman College?
Would it be possible to put a social media post just with an update of where we are on Martin Bluff Road within the next couple of weeks? Just, I know last time we kind of had a timeline where we might potentially start asphalt paving, and I know they're making some headway on the close to the elementary school, sorry.
Exactly what Craig said.
They're going to be paving by the end of the month.
They're going to be paving.
In, in August.
By the end of the month, there's no running.
Well, anyway, if we could just do a social media post on that, that'd be, yeah, that'd be, yeah, that way we just give, provide the residents an update of where we are on it. I know it's a process, been, project's been taking a long time, and it looks like we're making some headways. I agree with Councilman Anderson that definitely the construction site could be in a more presentable manner. Unfortunately, we can't tell them the means and methods they're going to do their project, but they got to try to keep it where residents can pass to and from through there. Lauren Daigle concert last Friday was fantastic, huge turnout. That is fantastic asset to the city right here, and I can't wait for the next concert to come. Echo Councilman Albin, thanking city staff, everybody, everything that you do, city manager for going above and beyond and always fully dedicated to the city, whether it's with the sound, with the forty-six entertainment, with negotiating for always, for solid waste service. He always goes above and beyond and always has the city's best interests at heart. I have no further comments.
Thank you. Councilman Galat?
Congratulations, Mr. Waste Pro, for being here for another few years. I didn't ask during the series, how many of y'all's employees actually live in the city of Gochet? You got a rough number?
For, for just in our location here, we have seventy-six employees, fourteen actually within the city of Gochet, and the other like three or four that actually working off of that building, Gochet.
Okay, all right, thank you. Also, concert, I did over with Adam said, awesome, that was awesome concert. It was hot, but it was one of the best that I have ever been to, if not the best, and the crowd was fantastic, and I believe everybody was well behaved. I didn't hear any complaints about anything. So, it was a little difficult getting in, but once you got there, it was fantastic. That's it.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, um, so, I don't, I don't know your real name, you know, I've known you as Mama Lou, so, I know that's not the professional way, but that's the only name that I knew. So, on her property, to clear this up to you, Ms. Shancy, the city manager, this was the property where, where Clearwater ran the pipes underground. Remember, there was a, there was a property where, before I was on board, that we had a contractor, they just did a trench, and the trench went on the side of her yard.
Is this an, um, O, uh, O, is it Oxford?
It's on Oxford.
The Cinco.
Yeah, it's on Oxford.
Was on the Cinco.
And, and so, they put the drainage there, but in that area, it's a lot of leaves, trees everywhere, and if you look through that, I, I had, I, I sent on a.
Is this the one I went with you to?
Yes, ma'am, that's it, that's the one. And, and I sent for them to clear out the, the debris in that area. I, I supposed to have been on, I, they're supposed to be on a more recent with, with our new contractor, that, to clear out the debris. If it's not, we need to clear out the debris in that area, because what it is, is a bunch of trees and leaves, and the leaves, I mean, there's trees everywhere in that, because it's just, it's a wooded area. It's supposed to be a right of way, and in that right of way, it has power lines, it has telephone line, it's, it's, it's everything through there, but no one is clearing it out, no one is clearing the trees out, none of the companies are cleaning the trees out, the bushes and everything grown, overgrown. The leaves are falling from the trees, running right back into the new drain that they just put, that Clearwater put in, so it's getting full with leaves on the inside of it. It looked like it's clear when you look at it from the, the hole that spot that it's in, but inside of it is blockage. So, they, they're going to have to scope it and push whatever's in it, you know, or either push it through or dig it out, or however.
Vacuum truck.
Or the vacuum. So, that's what the problem, yes, sir?
I guess I'm wondering, I know, I've seen the project you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
On the drains on both sides, it runs underneath the wooded line right there.
Yes, sir.
In that college park area specifically, has there been an access point to access that easement in the past? I've looked, I can't find one, because the drains is in the rear of that area.
You can leave the car, Mr. Single One, that's in design, that if, I believe the contract, we got a grant, a contract came in here and did that, and all the drains run behind those people's fences.
Right.
The problem is, is it's packed full of.
Leaves.
Utility, well, not just leaves, but utilities, and so digging in there is difficult. But we did a project in there, and Mark even did that, if I remember correctly, these little, what do you call that, a trench?
Trench, trench.
Oh, trench drains, thank you. And so, he would know what the right entry was, and, and where we got into it, and all that kind of stuff.
Well, I got some history on it. I actually saw on some of my neighbors' day, actually, because I live not too far from her, and I got the history, actual history on it. They, the, that's supposed to be in a ditch in the back of them, it's supposed to be, and it didn't, supposed to go her direction, it's supposed to go out to the street in another direction. And nobody had no history on it, knew what it was, because somebody built their land up, put dirt and things, and built their land up, and shifted all the water back to her direction. So, and, so like, before I became councilman, they, they, then they got the contractor, and the contractor dug it the other direction, and let it fall that direction and her direction. And, and so, what I did was, I went with Clearwater in order to correct it, what they've already done, because they, in order to fully correct it, we would have to go in, change all the power lines, all the telephone lines, everything through there had to be redirected. So, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we're going back to big ditch.
Councilman.
Big ditch, back there, two, oh, I got three things in my jacket.
Right, it's, you're talking about.
Ms. Smith, Councilman Jackson, can, because of this being an issue in your ward, can we schedule a meeting you with Ms. Shancy and Public Works, and we'll come and discuss it? Because this, so we can move that meeting forward.
Okay, I got it.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilman Jackson?
Oh, my last thing. So, um. Oh, my last thing. So, I had quite a few citizens that asked about African-American acts to come out to the amphitheater. And of course, I addressed this issue before we got the contract with Forty-Six Entertainment, because you said that, because we were saying that they were country. They were dealing with country music. And we have forty percent black in the city of Gochay. So, we wanna patronize all our citizens to give them something to participate in. Because this is a great thing, the amphitheater is beautiful, and everybody should be able to enjoy it. Of course, you know, if, you know, anybody can come to the concert, but I'm just saying that your advertisement towards is not directing towards inclusion of all. So, and I've addressed this beforehand, but I'm addressing it again because people constantly ask me about it. This is a consistent thing. And I was trying to solve something before it got to this point. So, I know other, I've sent some y'all away. I know other promoters. They're interested in bringing even blues shows, and these are pretty good draws. You know, some of the major acts of the blues shows, or even R&B. So, this will give it the inclusion atmosphere. So, I'm just addressing it now so that everybody can, you know, put it on your mind. And when I see, if the one that we got contracted with now is not interested in putting, dealing with R&B or blues, we'll send another promoter that can bring something to the table and actually bring that type of show. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
Congratulations, Waste Pro. We are married for another six years. Then we'll reach our opt-out clause again.
But...
Or you grabbed it for four years.
Yeah.
Fifty-four, one-year extensions.
Uh-huh. Oh, congratulations on your soon retirement. I didn't know about that. That's my first time here. That's nice. So, congrats. And then I'm assuming you'll take this spot.
I'll still be involved.
Okay.
Semi-retirement.
Okay.
Full retirement.
I'll still be watching for that pickup truck around.
Trust me, it'll be around.
Did I hear you say a minute ago that you guys were gonna get new trucks?
Yes.
How many new trucks you gonna get?
Both the rear loaders, if we're gonna recycle, which now that's different, so we still might get a truck for that and another boom truck.
Okay.
There'll be a new fleet for the whole city.
Okay, cool. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I had that right. Yeah, Lauren Daigle was incredible. I think it was seven thousand attendees, which is huge. The line went all the way to the roundabout. But they got through security pretty quick, so Swetman does a really good job with handling that, especially considering the weather delay, everyone leaving and coming back. Babs, it's nice to see your face. You should come around more often. And with Richard's comments, I get what you're saying. I'm with you on that. But there is a place on Forty-Six Entertainment's website where anybody can go in and request any performers or send recommendations on who you'd like to see at the sound, and they will take into consideration or work on that with getting different acts in. I know with this being our first year, we do have limited amount of shows. I think we have eight or nine total, with more on the way. But next year, it's looking like we're gonna have a lot more and a big variety of those, so keep hoping.
Well, I've been contacted myself by promoters wanting to bring in, I can't recall the names off the top of my head, but I talked to the man on the phone, and I actually got his name, but what's the name of that band that played on the... It was, uh, East of Romulus. The guy who went to the band is the one that called and gave him the guy's number, and I called him, and I looked him up with Boy 6. But there is a promoter that wants to bring in an act. It's not an exclusive. He can go through Nathan and bring it in. He can...
Work together.
Work together, yeah. Because it's not like he's only the one doing it. Now, they didn't have, I know you weren't there, but they had a wonderful opener Friday night that was black. Blessing, I cannot offer, offering. And he was amazing. He sat up there and played the keyboard, and I mean, he was really, really good.
And it was a real spiritual concert on top of it. Lots of young children, kids.
And Ms. Daigle's, I'll save it to my comments. Anything else, Councilman?
Yeah, there were none of the airlines. None.
But there's a wall of T-shirts working on it.
That's all I have. Thanks for the attendance.
May I say one more, ask one more question?
Sure.
Ms. Moore, where was that did a magnolia tree on Westgate Parkway?
Probably when we first turned into it, it's on the first quarter.
First.
On the right or left?
It's in the middle.
Oh, in the median?
Yep.
Okay, in the median, okay.
The trees were talking about are in the median. There's some piece, some hill with the cars, and it's still there.
Okay.
And they need to cut it one, but my father had to cut the median in front of my house. It's covered now. You don't get a penny for it.
I know a lot of people do, but a lot of people don't.
If Councilman Anderson agreed to cut it, I'll come help him, so we'll see about that.
If we have to, I think Michael will take care of this one.
We're past citizen comments. You'll have to contact us after the meeting.
I still wanna congratulate Waste Pro, and y'all doing a great job, and I'm sure you'll continue to do it. Thank you very much. And talking about the concerts, I requested rock and roll, and I hadn't seen it yet, Richard, so... But we were asked upfront what kind of groups we would like to send.
I said it.
Did you?
I did. I did. You did.
I hadn't got any rock and roll yet either, so, all right. That's all I got.
Is there any comment to my...
Councilman, Mr. Gode, sorry. There, we're in our comments.
I had a few minutes or seconds left, and y'all never answered me.
It's okay. Somebody will contact you. We took your comment into consideration, and we'll get back with you. Somebody in the city will contact you regarding your issues. Okay, that's, now it's to my comments. I wanna just say, you know, I think Forty-Six Entertainment, we're blessed to have a partnership, Nathan and his staff, to work with Ms. Yancy, and if you do have, as you say, stay tuned to that Facebook page of The Sound. Stay tuned to enjoythesound.com. There's a way to contact. If you have a promoter or somebody interested, if you can't get through to Forty-Six Entertainment, call Ms. Yancy's, email her. She'll be glad to forward it on to them. As far as booking acts, it's months, years in advance to book an act coming here. They're working on groups for another year. But he's got people committed. You have to wait on release times, but it's in the process. But I can assure you that they have said they're committed to all genres here in Gochay. I do not want anyone leaving here or our citizens feel that we are singling out certain kind of genres, because we are not. We have had several different, Lauren Daigle, her band, if you did not know, her band was awesome. I encourage you to go watch it. They were African-American band, and they were phenomenal, and she boasted about each one of them during the concert. The band that opened for her, as you heard the city manager say, he was amazing. I mean, you just had to be there, but we do have all races and nationalities performing, and we want them to perform at the Sound. And our city is open to everyone, not one certain person. Also, I want us to be reminded that we did win an award for Ms. Daigle. It was "We Are the Sweattiest Performance That She Has Done." Mississippi won the sweattiest city.
Sweattiest with the largest crowd.
Yeah, with the largest crowd.
Tied for the best crowd, too.
The best crowd, tied for the best crowd, too. So, we won, the state of Mississippi was nationally recognized, and we should be thankful and blessed. I know there's hiccups. I get the calls. Ms. Yancy gets the calls. The council gets the calls. And nothing is perfect, and it's just growing pains, but everybody, I ask that you try to remain patient, and I, of all people, know that is very hard. I also want to thank Howie Ladner in our planning department. He goes above and beyond, and I feel it's important. All of our stuff is important. We're thankful and blessed for every one of them. But sometimes you just have to tell people how much they are appreciated. He works twenty-four hours, seven days a week, just like all of us. If he gets a call to go anywhere in the city on a maintenance call, and especially, he has taken the Sound Amphitheater and the Inclusion Playground under his wing, and I just can't thank him enough like Ms. Yancy posted on her Facebook, thanking him and recognizing him. The Inclusion Playground, to our donors and to our sister state, as Lauren Daigle said, our kissing cousin, we want to thank them for that. I encourage you to go to the Inclusion Playground. Seeing those children from all over this coast, when I was out there Saturday, just all the way, we had somebody here from Australia. I mean, it is just great to go out there and get to see them enjoying an amenity that they all wished their community had, and now we have it, and they're driving to Gochay, Mississippi to take advantage of it. Waste Pro, congratulations again. We've had our ups and downs, but David Olson, can you stand up? David Olson, right here, kudos to you. Your team and you, you go above and beyond. Your leadership, your caring, and your passion does not go unrecognized. Your promotion is well deserved, and congratulations when you get it, because there is nobody more deserving of that than you. We thank you for your commitment to Gochay, and if we can ever do something for you, we're here for you. But please, thank all your employees for their hard work here in Gochay. I ask Jolene, you're over government relations. I ask that you all step up your game on social media. I ask that you look at Pelican's website, Facebook page, and I encourage you all to do as they. They are phenomenal, and it rocks. So, I look forward to our citizens getting more relations, more information, more informative things related to garbage, and it could be just anything, but I encourage you all to look at it and follow suit.
Keep it clean.
Lastly, two more things. And I don't know the order to do them, but I think I'm gonna save one for last. But yesterday, I had the privilege with a family member of mine that I had to call nine-one-one. To dispatcher, Bedorek, the other dispatcher, from them, to Acadian ambulance, those paramedics with Acadian know who they are, to our captain, Maurice McClure, and our firefighter, Kevin Hudley, that was there before Acadian arrived, to Dr. Justice at Singin' River Hospital, and to Nurse Gabby, to only a two-hour emergency room visit at Singin' River. I thank our Singin' River Hospital ER doctors, and I thank the nurse Gabby. I also thank the nurse before her when she changed, but it was utmost your professionalism, your caring, your passion, and your hard work did not go unrecognized. Lastly, if you all have not noticed, we had a national actress recognize his hometown as a young boy. He was my brother's best childhood friend. They were best friends. They continued to be best friends throughout my brother's life till it ended. Tomorrow is the anniversary. So, Chan Tatum, we are proud of you recognizing your hometown, Gochay, Mississippi, and where your father was employed in Pascagoula, Mississippi, and we appreciate all the positivity and you not forgetting us here in Gochay, Mississippi. That brings us to Ms. Yancy. Nothing. That brings us to Ms. Montgomery. And Mr. Dennis. And that brings us to, we have a motion to recess until August the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four at eleven-thirty P.M. Do we have?
A.M.
I mean, A.M., sorry. Do we have a motion?
It's a second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Motion carries. We're recessed.